Okay.
My dear. Okay, it's six thirty-four. I'd like to call the January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Town Council to order, please. Roll call.
William Clevinger.
Present.
Bill Githens.
Here.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Sally Richardi.
Here.
Rich West.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pleasure.
What a pleasure to be in the United States of America and here in the Republic which stands one nation of your heart and universal and the legacy and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to say that this meeting is being recorded and participation in the meeting is your consent to be recorded and to read the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Please take a moment, silence your phone. Thank you. First order on the agenda is the approval of the December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I just wanted to explain, you all had approved at last time with some changes, so we went ahead and made the two changes that were approved, and we've sent them out to make sure that was that it was to your satisfaction, shall we say.
It should be January tenth, shouldn't it?
Well, there is December seventh, twenty-seventh. Yes, it should be January tenth.
Second should be the tenth.
Tenth, okay, January tenth.
I'll make a motion. Motion been made by Mr. Githens. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ham has made the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next item is the approval of the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Didn't we just approve both of them?
No, you only approved December twenty-second.
And so move that we approve the January tenth, twenty twenty-three, complete meetings.
Mr. West makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Githens makes the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next item on the agenda is board and commission appointments. I think you all have the worksheets in front of you that Karen has put out. Going through these plan commission as a council president appointment, and I appoint Chester Goot. The BZA council president appointment is Andy Mashler, Mashlin, I'm sorry. And council appointment is Barry McManaway. And we've got an appointment, plan commissioner membership, not a member appointed.
They'll do that if they're moving.
Okay, they'll do that right. Okay. Let me do the council president appointments for the redevelopment commission first. My first appointment is Sarah Jones. My second appointment is Sally Richardi. And my third appointment is Gary Perick. Now, we have appointments by the town council.
I'd make a motion that we appoint Marty Osterbahn to the redevelopment commission for twenty twenty-three.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Richardi that we appoint Marty Osterbahn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. We have another appointment, Mr. Mayfield's.
I'd move that we appoint Tony Mayfield to the redevelopment commission for twenty twenty-three.
Second.
The motion by Mr. West and seconded by Mr. Ham that Anthony Mayfield be appointed to the redevelopment commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Town council now has an appointment to the library board.
I would like to reappoint Paul Leat. Make a motion to reappoint Paul Leat.
Mr. Richardi makes the motion to appoint Paul Leat. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
As on the library board?
Yes, thank you. Okay, tree commission. Appointed by the town council, currently held by Mike Stallings, and I think Mike has re-applied. Is there a motion to?
I'd move that we reappoint Mike Stallings to the public tree commission.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Mr. West moved that we appoint Mike Stallings. Mr. Ham seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the next one is appointment of town council currently held by Mr. Helfer. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Helfer?
I would move that we appoint John Helfer to the tree commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. West to appoint John Helfer, seconded by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've done that.
I would actually thank all the people who applied for petition. Were appointed at this time to continue in their volunteer efforts.
Thank you, Mr. West. Next is the public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh four. So I have a motion to open the public hearing. Come on, Mr. Githens move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham. Session starts at six forty-one.
Do you want to call all in favor for that?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Just in background, Mr. President, the Beachview Properties LLC filed a petition for annexation into the town of Culver. It's a common address at one eight seven one oh Tamarack Road, Culver, Indiana. It's approximately four point five acres kind of there, the south end of town. The current zoning is C two, and the proposed zoning remains at C two. The use is for construction of executive storage for RVs, boats, and miscellaneous personal property. And that's the petition before us this evening, Mr. Burke Richardson, I think, is here representing
You want to add?
The
Thank you. I'm happy to answer questions on the present board. If you have any questions in regard to a project that's intended for that property, but at this point, we're just looking to be in the process of annexation to start our work with the city and issuing out utilities and those types.
Comments from the council? Questions?
C two. Zoning will remain the same, so all it is is an annexation in town.
Anyone else in the council?
Nope.
Anyone in the audience? Mr. Berger.
I'm just curious what's going to happen with Tamarack Road since it's county on one side and will become town on the other. Are you splitting it? Are you taking it into? Does it become an extension of South Main Street?
That property has West Shore Drive along the front of it, which is already in our asset management plan, so we would continue to maintain that, but the county would continue to maintain Tamarack. And I would assume that
He's talking about, he talked about Tamarack Road going south. That's what you're talking about.
Right.
A lot of times in them cases, it's split when there's two jurisdictions or there's something worked out, and I was just curious if something hasn't worked out with the county.
If I'm not mistaken, with this go before the county at some point.
That should be recorded, yeah.
I just had a question about the, you know, the building. I've seen some prints on this a long time ago, and this building is going to be a heated building with restrooms in it, if I remember right. But I think one of the issues that I had with it when it first came out is are people going to be able to stay in this building overnight?
No, part of the developers agreement when they went before the BZA was that they could not have overnight stays, and it will be written into their leases, where they cannot do that.
Was the building sprinkled? I don't recall.
Yes, the plan is that the, as a commercial building, and that
What, what about the lodge? Is it going to have people staying in it overnight?
There's, all the buildings are for executive storage, and there'd be no overnights. There's no clubhouse or anything like that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All of them are the same. There's one that has a back portion that's built onto it that would be owned by the developer, maintained by Alan and Chris and the Beachview Properties. If it maintains Beachview, it'll transfer it to another entity. It'll be wholly owned and maintained by them, and it'll be a little bit of extra storage for their stuff. But yeah, the lease has been particularly drafted, embedded by the BZA to make sure that nobody can stay overnight.
That's the plan.
And it's tricky because you want to allow people access, so it'll be a gated development, so there'll be gates at both sides. The gates will be open during the day, but people may be traveling in at all times at night, so we couldn't say it was restricted access from, you know, ten at night to six o'clock in the morning. Because someone may come in at eleven, or they may come in early, whatever it might be. So they'll have access, but they won't be able to stay overnight. And one thing that the BZA requested was having cameras on site to be able to further monitor if anybody stayed overnight, and all the properties in the Collins portfolio are being fitted with cameras, and this is a new one, and it'll also have the same security system with cameras present and twenty-four hour monitoring through that camera system. So it'll be secured with the gates, and it'll be monitored by video overnight. So if someone were to stay, it'd be a violation of their lease, and they could
So the tenants all have remotes for the gate or?
Correct, yeah. So now, again, if they pull up during the day, the gates are going to be open during the day, but as they pull up to limit any type of traffic problem that you could have in those overnight hours, we presume to be minimized. The key fob will allow them to open the gate from a far distance, so that by the time they get there, it'll be open, and they can come right in.
Okay, thank you.
And the design is pass-through as well, so you won't have any larger vehicle having difficulty to turn in. All the larger vehicles will enter from Tamarack, but there'll be plenty of room to enter, and they'll be able to pass through and for fire suppression as well. They'll be able to drive through for fire department, that type of thing. It'll be full access, so there won't be any limitation on turnarounds and different things like that.
Have these been committed for yet?
The tenants? They've been, I'm sorry?
Tenants signed and intent?
There's no, no intent or legal sign, but there's several that the, the desire for this type of product is strong, and there's been several that are very much interested, and so that as soon as they're available, they'd like to.
Okay.
I think they'll all go pretty quickly, and some are also getting more than one bay at a time, so each bay has two doors, so could have one tenant have two units side by side.
Okay, thank you.
Will there be a key, will there be a key pad there or something for emergency service to be able to access the building at any hour?
The plan at this point in time is to make sure to, as the gates go up, to work with local, or local emergency services to provide whatever you need to be able to make access to that. Having access to a gated development is, you know, obviously not a, it may not be very often here, but it's a common problem. It has been solved, for sure. And we don't want to provide you or provide those utility or those services with a solution that may not fit for them, so it's better for us to work with them and make sure that the solution they receive or get is what would work best for them. So saying, here's a key fob, and you can use it, may not be something that they would want. If they want to keep that entry, that's something that we could add on, make sure that whoever needs to get in there.
The knock box system, maybe?
Yeah, something along those lines, or, you know, if there's some kind of emergency lever somewhere that's really not accessible to somebody, but the services would know where it is, something like that to open the gates would be easily added to it. And what was important for us when we considered that was making sure that it was what was needed, not what we thought was best.
Good, thank you. Then another discussion or comment? Council?
Online, is there anything online?
Anyone online? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. The move?
Second.
And move by Mr. West and seconded by Mr. Ham to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is the first read of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh four. An ordinance annexing certain contiguous lands to the town of Culver Marshall County, Indiana. Jenny?
Um, you have a resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero one. That is the fiscal management plan that fits along with this ordinance that Mr. Clevinger drafted for you. I know we had to make a number of modifications on that, so if you would like to wait until the next meeting to do first read on the ordinance and the resolution, that's, that's up to you. I thought it's a pretty lengthy document that you may want to take some time with. And I don't know that, do they have to do first read tonight, Jim, or?
No, we had to have the public hearing within a certain period of time, but we have to act on it within, was it ninety days of your petition?
Yeah, that, is that a hundred and fifty days?
Okay.
Something along those lines.
Yeah, but yeah, they have time.
Yeah, yeah.
We could put these on the agenda for next month, do your first read. I assume the resolution would go on with it, or is it part of that package?
It's part of the same. I mean, the ordinance basically confirms that you're adopting the resolution, so. And as she, as Jenny pointed out, she put together this fiscal plan, and, you know, you may want to take a look at it. It's pretty easy to, to provide the non-capital services you, you know, the fire department, the police department, they just kind of expand their territory a bit, but you know, the, the capital improvement, sanitary services, sewers, water lines, that kind of thing. You may want to take a look at that and get a better feel for the dollar figures and what's kind of impacted and so forth.
I did also include a note in there about the fact that we had annexed to the Howard property on the south end of South Main Street, and that by statutory components, we have to get utilities to that location, and so if you want to take a till the next meeting, I, I think that would be okay.
I would make a motion to defer putting on this ordinance twenty twenty-three oh four until our next meeting, given the last minute changes that have been made, and give us a chance to review this till our next meeting, which
Motion for made by Mr. West to postpone us till the second meet, or the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham. And discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you going to want Mr. Richardson, Richardson back for the next meeting?
I don't think it's necessary that you have a question for him.
There will be questions that come up in the interim. If we meet through this, we can funnel them through Kenny to.
I'm at the board service, whatever you guys need. Happy to be here, answer questions or straighten things out that may come up.
Well, you know, you may want to tend if we can, but I just didn't want to have you come out. This was not necessary.
My wife would appreciate that. But, yeah.
I think the next meeting's Valentine's Day, too.
That can be dangerous. That's true.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the second, third read of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh one, a rezone of one one Ford Lake Shore Drive from residential R one to residential R two. Is there a motion to pass on second, third reading? So move. Mr. Githens makes a motion. Mister thirty seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is the second, third reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh two, a rezone of eight ten South Main Street from residential district R one to residential district R two. There are motion to approve on second, third read.
They're moved.
They're moved by Mr. Ham. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. West seconds. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is the second and third reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh three, a rezone of two seventeen South Ohio Street from resident district R one to residential district R two. Motion for, to approve on second, third read.
They'll move.
Been moved by Mr. Ham. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Richardi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is banking. Karen?
Yes, I, last meeting, I told you that the contract with TCU needed to be extended. They provided a new interest rate in line with interest rates going up, and I would just ask for your approval to sign that contract. There was some expression of concern that the interest rate may be overshadowed by increasing interest rates and wouldn't keep up with the trend, and that is something that we could address. There are mechanisms in the state statute that allow for investments, and we can take a look at that, but we'll have to take a number of steps before we can do so. I think we've got some time, as, you know, even checking today what the interest rates are now versus what they're operating. We've got some
What was the rate that they offered on it for two years?
Um, I'd rather not say in public at this point.
All right, thank you.
But it was higher than four point five.
Is that floating or fixed?
Um, it's, that one's fixed.
Okay.
Higher than four point five.
Okay.
And your recommendation was to
Go ahead and fix it, and that, yes.
For two years.
Go two years, yes. I checked on a one year, and it was
That's fine.
It was about fifteen percent or point one five.
Okay, any other discussion on the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Been moved by Mr. Richardi for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham to allow Karen to engage with interest credit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye. Good. Tom Andrew report.
All right. Some things have changed since I sent this out, because we got some information in today, mainly regarding street department stuff, but starting at the beginning, I don't need to cover Lake Mags or State Jefferson Street Trails. Those are status quo, but under the water project proposal from Midwestern, I wanted to let you know that we have a preliminary schedule that Bob wanted me to share with you guys, and I'll board this in a memo if you would like. But basically, the schedule would be, we would be advertising the project from January thirty-first through February seventh with a pre-bid meeting on two twenty-one. Bid opening would occur on three fourteen. Award would occur on three twenty-eight after we've been able to assess those bids to make sure they match the, the request. But obviously, Midwestern engineers are involved in helping us with this whole schedule. Then we would have notice proceed and contract execution in April. So that's the water project in the north end of town that we've got a schedule built out for. I forwarded you all a quote for pump station in your email for Peerless Midwestern. Bob said this is not something that can be further repaired. I mean, this is just something we need to get taken care of. That total project cost for a high-service pump is sixteen thousand nine eighty, and we are looking to get approval to do this pump.
We have a motion to approve the cost of the high-service pump for sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
They'll move.
That move by Mr. Ham at the second. Seconded by Mr. Richardi. Any discussion?
But, you know, we're isn't that any water supply?
This is a pump station two. Bob, are you online? You is this one brought up?
You're broken up pretty bad. I can't hear you.
Uh, what, which pump station is this Peerless quote for?
That is for the water pump, high-service pump. There's two high-service pumps. They run alternately monthly, and that is the pumps that put the water out into the system. We have two. One of them is now defunct, so it needs to be replaced sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye.
Okay.
Page.
Um, thank you. Put those aside. Um, I also wanted to cover under a street department and community crossings. So, you know, we got the community crossings award for the Lake Shore Drive project, and we have some preliminary budget numbers for that project that I'll share with you, and again, I'll put this in a memo as well, because this just came in. But basically, that project is right around five hundred and seven thousand dollars. The grant that we got from Community Crossing covers three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, because part of that project will be moving utility line or sanitation sewer. The outstanding balance on that, we would be taking about forty-four thousand five seventy-five from sewer. And then we also have our own match on that community crossings, which comes out of the MVH fund, and we would be looking at about a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen and seventy-five cents. Now, of course, this all has to go to bid, but this is a preliminary estimate from VS Engineering, which is Chris Widener. And when we go through that process of bidding up a project and getting on schedule for that, VS Engineering will, will help guide us through that the way Midwestern is the other project on the north end of town. But knowing that this project is on the docket for potentially spring construction start time or late spring, early summer, we want to send communication to the people in that neighborhood, because part of Lake Shore Drive, you getting in and out of those homes along there, get a little tricky during construction. So we want to give them a heads up. So I've written a simple letter that I thought I'd share, and if you all approve, we'll get this out, and then if those homeowners have questions for Bob and crew, we can take care of some of that communication before we get started on the project.
And we're including the commercial ventures in that same script?
Yeah, yeah, everyone along there would get a heads up. So it would basically say the town of Culver's received a community crossings grant to work on a project on Lake Shore Drive. So it would basically say the town of Culver's received a community crossings grant to work on a project on Lake Shore Drive that will widen the northern part of the road from Highway ten to Academy Road. This will make the entrance into town from the east and west easier to traverse. The center section is currently narrow for vehicles turning onto Lake Shore Drive. We also hope to improve the east side of Lake Shore Drive by moving some utilities and adding curves to keep water and debris out of the yards running parallel to the right of way of that road. We want to inform you of this project, which we expect to go under construction later this spring because it will create some traffic slowdowns on Lake Shore Drive. It might also create an inconvenience for accessing your property while construction is underway. The contractor will have to maintain access to each of your driveways. Though we will try to minimize the impact of the project, there is a chance that there may be need for a road closing. If you have questions, feel free to reach out to Town Hall and we've got a phone number there. Thank you, et cetera. So Bob's already identified what might be potentially trickier areas on that road and we'll speak to some of the neighbors in person if we need to do that as well as businesses. But we just want to get some communication out that this is underway. And once we do have a firmer schedule, we'll obviously publish that out as well.
Do we know where it's going to be widened on which side?
Yeah, east side.
Okay.
Yep.
Would you like a motion to approve your letter?
Yeah, I'd like for you all to know what we're saying and approve it.
Make a motion to approve Jimmy Moose's letter.
It's been.
In the mailing.
Yeah, in the mailing.
In the mailing.
Awesome, okay.
It's been moved by Mister Sherry and seconded by Mister Githens to approve the letter that Jimmy has got to send out regarding Lake Shore Drive. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same time. Motion passed.
Great, thank you. Um, and I really appreciate that Bob and Karen foresaw the need for us to be on top of that. Um, so that covers the VS Engineering and that Community Crossings project. The Park Crossroads Cellar Project, as you can see, there's been no change in the status of that. It's a little bit old for them to be working. Um, then under Town Manager Updates, I have given you all a copy of the SURF contract. Um, this had gone through review with Bill, Cam and Jim Clevenger. And then it went to SURF. And they made some modifications, mainly in the name of the company being Surf Internet and sort of just surf throughout. They also duplicated some more of the RFQ. They kind of took our lead on that. Um, so I am convinced that this is ready to go and be signed by the council and ready to have you motion to approve and then we would send it for signature to SURF as well.
Any discussion on part of council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the broadband fiber contract with SURF. Still moved.
I'd add to that the authorization for the president of the council. It's signed by the president of the council and by the court treasurer and so.
Yeah, I think we also have a signature lines for redevelopment commission. Because they're doing, they're covering the, the cost of it. I thought we would put it in front of them as well and I've been keeping the CRC in the loop. So if your copy bill doesn't have a page for CRC, we'll add that.
All right.
So were you seconding when authorizing Bill, in other words, Rich?
Yes.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Wanted to clarify.
Yeah. I agree.
Mister Clevenger, it is in there. So that's the one you sign in the book of the CRC's page.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to sign the contract, the broadband, broadband fiber contract with SURF. Any further discussion from council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same time. Motion passed.
Um, I'm still waiting to hear from MCEDC Board on the contract for the comprehensive plan that the Crossroads Culver team has been working on. I wanted to let you know that I did meet with MayCog and discuss how far we can get with the comp plan before I leave. And because as you recall, some of the narrative in this plan, we had agreed we would be writing and not put that work entirely on MayCog. I think we'll get pretty far down the road with this, so rather than make a decision about it now, I'd like to see how far I get with them. We've outlined the chapters that we have to like write a community profile, the discovery work that they've done and the public engagement. We have a lot of that co-related. So I'm going to be working on that next month with some deadlines from them. And then I'll let you know at the first February meeting where we're out with that. We intentionally tried to set some of those deadlines for four council meetings, so we know how much gets done with it. Uh, the next meeting for that team is this Thursday, assuming the weather's okay. Um, and as I think most of you know now, Karen had arranged, she brings a consultant in to talk to us about a community calendar. So we're going to have the Crossroads team meet about that. We've invited some people from the county on Marshall County Tourism and also the Marshall County Crossroads team who might be interested in a community calendar conversation. Um, so that should get covered this Thursday if the weather allows us to have it. Merchant Association meeting, I was actually, I believe, meeting with uh, Mister Clevenger during this la- not you, Mister Jim Clevenger during this last one. So Amber ran that meeting and they are helping us with comp planning, but also they're still studying this idea of putting in some uniform new banners. So there may be some information coming up on that. Uh, special event permits. I have one for you that has two dates. This is the annual Lions Club White Kane fundraiser event. This would occur on June third of this year and July twenty-ninth. Those are the two weekends. They stand at Lake Shore Drive and Academy Road intersection and also Jefferson Street and Main Street in downtown Culver. They don't close the roads or anything, but they do put up uh, the orange cones and signage and they wear the blazers and stuff to, and basically collect with their white canes.
I have motion that we approve the event requests from the Lions Club for the two dates for their Kane fundraiser on June third and July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mister West has made the motion to approve the Lions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Ham. Any discussion? If not.
June third, red weekend.
Um, I believe it is.
I'm just.
They usually pick that one in the red weekend for summer school.
But no, that, okay, oh.
Yeah, traditionally they pick those.
One, wearing one for summer, okay, all right.
Thank you, Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same time, motion passed.
All right, great, thank you. I don't have any new updates regarding the red grant or the Dunes project. Um, and then obviously we covered annexation of the director of Earl Williams. All I've got for you.
Thank you. Department head of yours for Jeff, the MS.
Hello there. I'm working on four projects right now for this year. First one is the end of the year reports. Um, looking to like within the next thirty days to hopefully get that into your inboxes for your review. Second one is more or less the biggest and most important one out of the group here is our Medicare audit and cost analysis. This is due the end of May to the federal government here and it's quite a lengthy cost analysis breakdown of basically every little cost that we have. Something different that Medicare has not done before. And so it's, it's involved several different entities from our billing department, from us to Karen. And so we've been working on it all. Last year was our year to get all the data. Now it's, it's putting all the data into their formula and their requirements of what they want. So working on that right now. Uh, the third one is after speaking with VacuMed in regards to some of the things that they're requesting with that cost analysis. We talked about reviewing the billing rates and so they're going to give me some, some regional trends in billing rates. And so I know we did it in twenty-one, but just to see, so I might be coming to you with possibly looking at our billing rates and changing our billing rates based upon that. And then the final thing is our state provider, SURF is due this October. So I'll be getting that sent down to the state as well for a legal as well. So. Any questions from any of you?
Any questions from council?
Nope.
Thank you, Jeff.
Terry, fire.
I don't have anything for you tonight.
Thank you. Wayne's voice. Amber?
Uh, we had our Culver Park snow day this past weekend. It was really successful. Probably a little too successful. We had about a hundred and twenty people come through and attend the event. So very well attended. This coming weekend, we have our pre-community yoga class. The following weekend, we have our coffee, coffee and canvas class. So a lot of upcoming programs. Other than that, we've been accepting applications for seasonal employees this summer. Um, they've been coming in, starting to schedule some interviews, so that's going really well. That's all.
All right, thank you, Amber. Utilities, Bob, you're on.
You covered all my items unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Bob?
Nope.
Nope, if not, okay. Boards and commission reports. Plan commission, anyone have a call or report for the plan committee?
Um, I can cover that for you. Both Plan Commission and BZA have had some very long meetings in the last few months. Um, the Plan Commission has set out some goals for this year of reviewing zoning ordinance and potentially making some changes down the road. So they've, they've been discussing that. Board of Zoning Appeals, I believe we were here until ten thirty at this past meeting and the one before that as well. Um, so I, I think they are definitely putting in the volunteer hours in huge numbers. Both of those groups. The Plan Commission did have a discussion at their meeting about, and they wanted just to put the idea out for council to consider maybe over the next month or so, or maybe at budget time. They wondered if there would be interest in a stipend for people who serve on Plan Commission and BZA. Uh, mainly because some of these people are finding that three and four hour meetings run a bit long. So, uh, you know, the number of cookies and brownies and bake isn't always enough. But anyhow, they, they definitely have been very busy the past year. We do have some employees who serve on those boards, mainly Plan Commission. We have, I believe, three positions that serve on that and ours are Wayne, Bobby Cooper Jr. from the Fire Department and Sean Miller from the Fire Department. So it might encourage more to step into it if there were something like that. But something to think about. And that's really it between those two boards. It's just been very busy and I appreciate that some of them actually signed up to do it again when you major appointments. It is quite a commitment.
Thank you. Talented redevelopment commission.
Not a whole lot to report. Reorganized next weekend.
Pre-commission. John, do you have anything?
Uh, just an update. We're in the process of taking down five trees throughout the town. We have some more to do, but the weather has been so good that it probably is now and I agree to it. I have noticed some trees on Main Street as well, as well as Lake Shore Drive. Not so much the trees not healthy, but they're causing courage to heave. And you have to consider that for two thousand twenty-three. There's some areas there that you could call a, a hazard walking down the sidewalk. Yeah, well, we only have fifteen dollars dollars to work with this year. We planted thirty trees last year for Mike's doggy connection. We changed type of tree instead of these huge labels that grow and causes a kind of damage. We, we got what they call parkway trees. There's not enough, not the same type of maintenance. They don't grow as large and they don't do as much damage. So hopefully over the next fifty, sixty years, those, those will be nice and we won't have to pick our curbs. Sidewalk, that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, John. Karen Clark's report.
I have three claims that are over twenty-five hundred dollars for your approval. The first one is Lincoln Way Autobody, that's for two thousand eight, that's seventy-four dollars and eighty-seven cents for repairs to seats car and all but a thousand dollars actually covered by insurance. Second is image trying to incorporate it into how we have three dollars and thirteen cents. And that's for EMS contractual services. And finally, Miller Insurance Group, twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And that's for the workings code for the town employees.
Is there a motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars?
Still moved.
It's moved by Mister Ham. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Mister West. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those by the same sign, motion passed.
Um, Mr. Ripley emailed me today and wondered kind of where we wanted to place the Town Manager advertisement. And I told him I'm in check with you all. He has access to it as, as do I, if you list serves within the municipal community in the state of Indiana. And we put it out on TGL. Is there particular newspapers you want to advertise in? There's also Indeed and some like Monster online type of spots, but if you could give me some guidance, I can get some of that stuff posted.
Anything else, Karen?
Any guidance? Any guidance?
All of you.
Yeah.
We're on the possible.
Do you want to set a budget amount, like a not to exceed?
Some of the places, some of the services charge, some don't.
Correct.
What has been the past history?
You're asking me to remember like two years ago, so.
What, what do you, what do you think?
You know, I would say maybe not to exceed, yeah, a thousand or two thousand dollars. I don't think that we would hit a thou- two thousand. But that at least is a little wiggle.
I'd make a motion not to exceed two thousand.
Second.
Mister Githens makes a motion not to exceed two thousand. Mister Ham, second.
To advertise for the Town Manager.
Advertise for Town Manager. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passed.
And I have two conflict of interest forms and I'll just, as a reminder to the council members and others, town employees, that now's the time to file the one for the, the year. Rich West filed one and said an annual disclosure statement is a limited partner in the Culver Cove Limited Partnership. Mike Pazen is a branch manager, his son-in-law of First Farmers Bank. The town occasionally does business with that institution and he's on the board of the Culver Second Century Main Street Organization. And then Dan Osborne, who serves on the Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, is a single transaction disclosure. The name of contractor or vendor, I'm not sure. I think it's more of a relationship. Conflict is with the four fifteen Lake Shore. The petition date was on nineteen twenty-three and I think that's ongoing. His in-laws have an interest in purchasing a unit in this develop, in the four fifteen Lake Shore development. If it's approved, he has no financial interest.
If it's approved, um, he has no financial interest or gain in it, if, but just to um, make that disclosure.
Thank you.
Um, and then I will get those uh, submitted to the state and to the county clerk. Um, the last thing I have is Thomas Excavating submitted a pay application for their work at the park. They are still trying to get their STAMS number, which is just it's ridiculous. So, um, that they're being put through all this, so I feel very bad for them. But if you could go ahead and approve, I'm still holding on to your claim that you all approved last month. If you could apply, approve pay up number four, which is in the amount of eighty thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. As soon as they get their STAMS number, I will cut checks.
Eighty thousand five hundred fifty-four?
Eighty thousand five hundred fifty-four forty-nine.
From us or from CRC?
Uh, it's, uh, from, it's actual the the Ocre funds. So, which is why it's a whole reimbursement, you know, so it's just a sad situation, frustrating.
I move that we authorize Karen to pay the, I was in support, fine for eighty thousand
Five forty-four, five fifty-four forty-nine.
Okay, um, as soon as they receive their their sample verification.
Sorry, again. Moved by Mr. West and seconded by Mr. Githens to approve the expenditure of eighty thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents for Thomas Excavating. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, thank you.
And, um, that's all I have. I'll provide a list of all the reports that I've completed for January and all the reports that are coming up in the next couple of months. The W twos are out, so that's one big thing off my list.
Thank you, Karen. Ernest's report.
Uh, Mr. President, all of the things I've been working on, we've already talked about this evening, so I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here in the audience for utility shut off? During non-citizen input. Amber?
Awesome. Um, so this is all just on behalf of the Culver Lake Max and Cookie Visitor Center. I just wanted to give a heads up. I know the last time we, um, we presented about Winter Fest, um, we had a map out. We talked to some merchants at the Retail Merchants Association, and they just suggested we flip the layout. I have that here if you want to look at it. Um, I planned to show all the department heads. Wayne, I assume you want to see it, especially with the beer garden. We can talk about it tomorrow if needed. Um, we just flipped where the ice fights and the beer garden were, nothing too complicated. I've been communicating with all the department heads about the specific needs we need for the event, so just a heads up there. I want to make sure everyone's kind of on the same page. Um, and then just for your information, um, I went into the Culver redevelopment position meeting, made a presentation on behalf of the Visitor Center, um, for our twenty twenty-three uh, funding request. I have that here, just so you're aware of what the projects are that we're working on this year. Um, also included is the Culver Winter Fest schedule, which is something we're working on. And related to that event, um, we actually just, the board approved, um, and we're in the process of hiring an event coordinator that will be taking care of all the key events in Culver. I included that job description we put out, just so you're aware of the work that they'll be doing with us with the visitor. So you want to just down and everyone take one. If you have any questions about any of the projects or that particular position, just let me know.
Thank you, Amber.
Yeah.
Any citizen input online? During none? Council issues, Mr. West?
Um, in a sidebar conversation with Mrs. Monroe, um, she has um, suggested that she would offer to extend her resignation date um, until she be engaged or replacement, and she, um, maybe willing also to stay on to train or help train that person. Um, I would like to, uh, I guess, make a motion that we, if you'd like to speak to that, Jenny, and then if we make a motion to accept this extension of her resignation.
Um, yeah, I just, we have a lot of active projects between comp planning, um, street department, uh, broadband showing up here in the next month. I have a meeting with them on Friday to start talking schedule and and activities. Uh, and I just want to make sure there's a smooth transition uh, to to keep these projects going in an organized way and not put a burden on the team, uh, working for the town or on the clerk's office or anyone else for that matter. Um, so if you're good with that, I will um, make sure that we keep projects going and um, I know you're making an effort toward hiring, so, uh, I think that's a good thing. And just want to make sure that that person coming in is set up for success.
So it's made a motion. Do we need a motion?
I made a motion.
Procedure.
Uh, well, I, you know, I guess it doesn't hurt anything if everybody's kind of in agreement that she hangs around. I mean, uh, or if you're not in agreement, then at least you're going to vote on no, I guess, so.
I think you offered the extension. I think it's the town's best interest. Um, from all perspectives that that happens, I think it will provide some assurance with many of the contracts and activities that we have going on, that there'll be some continuity. Um, so I would, at least for the record, like to see us accept, um, that kind of offer to hang around for a while.
Mr. Second to Mr. West's motion.
I'll second that.
And second advice, Mr. Shari, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Bill?
Uh, we got ten days before people can file for town council.
Probably third.
And, uh, you know, so far we've got Karen has filed for and Rich has filed for council, so we still have two openings. You know, two people to yet to file, and so, you know, you as you as precinct or your chair kind of want to know where we are on all that.
Okay, thank you. Sally, did you file?
I didn't make it in today.
Okay.
And some other commitments.
Not.
But I should get that done before the weekend. Yeah, I'll drive up to the morning.
Sally, you have any input?
No.
Okay.
I'm still retiring.
Yeah, but they can't change your mind.
No.
During nine, I have a motion to adjourn the plans. The move by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. Shari, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.